All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our City Council's special meeting, Tuesday, November 14th. Calling this meeting to order, and we're going to have our city clerk start with our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howell.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Tree. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Retuzia Ndipure.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Great, thank you. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Deputy Mayor Lamb, would you mind doing the land acknowledgement? Oh, you got it?
I have it right open.
Oh, she's got it open. All right, go ahead.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples, who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snokewami Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of the land, who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. So first up, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, first up, we have public comments, and we'll start in the room with Phil.
Sorry. Is it on? Okay. My wife Lena and I have lived in Samamish for seven years. I'm on the Steering Committee of People for Climate Action, and was a member of the City Climate Action Plan Community Advisory Group. People for Climate Action has been working with our city groups on the east side to address the lack of sense of urgency dealing with what has become a climate emergency. The United Nations IPCC call to reduce fossil fuel use by half in the next six years reflects a new climate reality, which has brought fire and dangerous smoke into the lives of people who live not very far from here. The Climate Action Plan you will adopt in December is a good start on our actions to reduce global emissions. It sets the policies for the programs and ordinances which will need to be adopted over the coming couple of years. The Sustainability Commission you will charter tonight has the potential to make an important contribution to get the city on a path which has a reasonable chance of reaching the 2030 emissions reduction goal in your resolution of last March. The Planning Commission correctly recommended that the new commission address methane gas usage as a top priority, and they can be instrumental in getting the electrification ordinance into the public review process. Their attention to ordinances which address building energy efficiency and EV charging plugs in new buildings are also, or should be, top priorities. It will focus the work of the new commission and staff. If the council tonight asks for a timeline to be presented at the December public hearing on the Climate Action Plan, which will get these three ordinances through the public review process in the first half of 2024. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Selia?
Selia Wu, Samamish. Good evening, council members. Here's an excerpt from the City of Samamish's employee manual, which I would like to read to you on page 34. When considering discipline that would sever the employment relationship, the city manager will conduct a pre-disciplinary hearing. The hearing serves as a check against a mistaken decision and as an opportunity for an employee to furnish reasons why he or she should not be disciplined before the decision is finalized. After my colleague and I, both women of color, raised concerns to HR about the city manager's hostility towards us, he retaliated by putting me on two weeks unpaid suspension and a last chance agreement. The reason he used? That I responded privately to an inquiry from a journalist at the Samamish Independent, a routine function that was part of my job description. The unpaid suspension and the last chance agreement were illicit and retaliatory actions by the city manager. I retained a lawyer and asked for a hearing. It never happened. This was in direct violation of your very own employee manual. As you recall, I asked for help from the city manager and attorney when calls were made for my termination for something I didn't do. I continue to receive threats to my employment from former councilmember Jason Ritchie. Mr. Ritchie continues to slander me, weaponizing the false allegations that I violated Ms. Sarah Howe Kimsey's First Amendment rights. This is why one of my requests my attorney made to the city is a letter stating that I didn't violate Ms. Kimsey's First Amendment rights, as confirmed by the court documents evidence. I think this is a very reasonable request, considering the harm these false allegations have caused me. So, Mayor Clark, will you please request the city manager to meet with me and my attorney to address the matters outlined in our letter that was received by you on September 14th?
Apologies, this is just a one-way public comment. I cannot respond.
Okay, well, how can I get an answer then?
I'm looking to our attorney.
I believe that the city manager's office will reach out, or I'll reach out to your attorney within the next day or two. Thank you.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Steve? No. All righty, we will move to online public comment.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. I will unmute callers in order they have raised their hands. You will have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. We don't have anybody.
All righty, thank you so much. Okay, so next up, we have our consent calendar of one item. If anyone would like to make a motion to approve that, or if anyone has questions or would like to pull it.
So moved. Second?
All right, motion on the floors to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we are good to go there. Next, we have a proclamation. Councilmember Tree, if you'll do National Education Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation American Education Week, November 13th through the 17th of 2023. Whereas American Education Week began in 1921 with the National Education Association and the American Legion raised public awareness of the importance of education. And whereas, education is the backbone to providing young people with the tools they need to be equipped, and equipping them with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, giving them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas, public education employees work tirelessly to serve our children in communities with dedication, care, and professionalism. And whereas, public schools encourage community, they bring together adults, children, educators, volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. And whereas, this is a time to acknowledge the achievements of public schools in America and honor the work of those making a difference in education. And whereas, each year, American Education Week is celebrated during the third full week of November, providing a dedicated time for schools, families, and community come together and support education. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Samamish, Mayor Clark, on behalf of the Samamish City Council do hereby proclaim November 13th through the 17th as American Education Week in the City of Samamish. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and thank you for being an educator. So now we are on to new business. Mike, it's been a while, so happy to see you. We have our draft 2024 state legislative priorities.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And I may have let our lobbyists know that they're supposed to be here a little bit later, so I don't know if they're online yet. Krista's saying they're not. So we'll just continue without, but good evening, council.
As I say, Councilmember Stewart can amend, and we can switch around if you want to.
If I could be bumped one, that'd be great.
Absolutely, yeah.
I propose we amend the agenda and move item four ahead of item three. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, sorry. Opposed? All right, sorry, thank you, Councilmember Stewart. Okay, so item number four, we have a contract award for fleet electrification assessment. I can say that. And we have Rose, and I think Julie might be online?
My apologies, Mayor Clark. Can we potentially do the Sustainability Commission item first?
Yeah. Okay. So I move to amend the agenda. We're going to put five first. If we go five, four, three, would that work? Yeah? All right, so I move to switch everything around to five, four, three for new business.
Second?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, item five, approval for ordinance 2023-561, creating a Sustainability Commission.
While we're getting set up here, council, I just want to say a big thank you to all the teams that worked on the Climate Action Plan and pulling together the work on the Climate Commission to put us in a position to be able to go out for recruitment along the same path as all of our other commissions, so that we can get everyone started on the right foot. So this, while Rose gets her stuff together, it's been a team effort, and there's been a lot of work put in, and really excited to get to this point. And so, looking forward to, once we get our presentation up and running here, I will turn it over to Rose. Perfect, thank you, and Rose, take it away.
All right, can everyone hear me okay? Great, thanks for having me tonight. Good evening, my name is Rose Wyker, and I am the Natural Resource and Environmental Sustainability Coordinator in the city manager's office. I am here tonight to provide an overview of the city's new proposed commission, the Sustainability Commission. I am joined tonight by deputy city manager Rachel Bianchi, who will be serving as staff support for the commission. As a reminder, commissions advise the city council on a wide range of policy issues. Commission members are appointed by council following an application period and interviews. Commission members bring a broad range of ideas and expertise to public decision-making and provide recommendations for council action. At the 2023 council retreat, the city council requested the development of a Sustainability Commission to provide advice to the council on sustainability-related issues. In spring of 2023, the city council appointed a Climate Action Plan Community Advisory Group, known as the CAG, to participate in the development of the draft Climate Action Plan, known as the CAP. The CAG was formed of a diverse group of Samamish community members, both residents and professional stakeholders, with a focus on assisting staff in developing a realistic cap that helps outline how Samamish as a city and community can achieve its climate and sustainability goals. The council began deliberations for the CAP at the November 8th, 2023 council meeting. With the plan nearing completion, staff is seeking council direction to create a Sustainability Commission. Should I wait here? Can we see this on Zoom? We're good? Okay, great. No worries. The timing of adoption of this ordinance will allow for the recruitment of commissioners to take place at the same time that recruitment is occurring for all other commissions at the end of 2023. The initial phase of work is budget-neutral, running through the current biennium and encompassing work that has already been approved by the city council through the Sustainability Program budget. The Samamish Sustainability Commission will consist of seven members and will meet on the second Thursday of each month from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The first meeting will be held in February of 2024. The commission serves as an advisory body to the city council and will pursue projects related to implementing the adopted Climate Action Plan, the climate elements of the Comprehensive Plan, the Urban Forest Management Plan, and other recommendations for how the City of Samamish can reach its carbon reduction and forestry goals. The Sustainability Commission will work with the city manager's office and Sustainability Coordinator to implement and monitor the progress of these plans across the city. This will include review of the Urban Forest Management Plan and recommended enhancements to the Climate Action Plan as needed to verify that sustainability program efforts are effective and responsive to the community's changing needs within the resources available. Staff would like to recommend that the city council move to adopt ordinance number 2023-561, creating the Samamish Sustainability Commission, and adding chapter 2.76 to the Samamish municipal code. Thank you.
All right, council, I'll open it up for any questions, comments, or motion. Councilmember Stewart?
Of all our commissions, this one feels like the most important one to have youth participation on. And I know that there were some concerns raised about having youth participation, so I think as a way to kind of try this out on this particular commission, we could have one seat, so in addition to what we already have, so we wouldn't replace any of the adults. But we could have one position that would be for a youth board liaison. So it would be someone who's on the youth board, who could then come and participate in all of the climate, or the Sustainability Commission meetings. And that would be a way for us to kind of try out having a youth member on one of our official commissions. We had three youth on the CAG, and as far as I heard, that that went very well, that they were incredibly participatory. They added a lot, and I know that this is a particular issue that is near and dear to many of our youth in the community's heart. So I'd like to see us add that to this.
Yeah, thank you. I will say Scott and I had this conversation yesterday, because I think what we were talking about was actually having a voting member, but then that would be an even number, so how we would work that out in the future. So Scott, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but we did talk about actually like making a work item or something for the work plan to kind of incorporate that into all of our commissions.
Yeah, I think it's really a question ultimately of whether or not the members are permanent members or more ad hoc. I think ad hoc is a little easier to manage. I know with the youth board, one of the things that we get is year-over-year turnover, understandably. And so, making sure that the participation is meaningful on that commission, I think we can figure out a way to have the youth board have designees, or however you want to, whatever term you'd like to use, to be the connection member for the... We can start with the Climate Commission, and if there's other commissions or the parks or other, we can figure out a path forward for that to make it work.
Yeah, I think it'll be great to do that across the board, and I understand that that will take more work to do that. I think this would be a good first step, and we can sort of try that out and see what about that works and what doesn't work. And that can be informative for the rest of the work items for the other commissions. I do think ultimately, we would like to get to a voting member, but that may take us a little time to get there.
Yeah, that makes sense. So would anything need to be voted on for that?
Well, I think that it would have to, we'd have to amend the ordinance that's here.
If I may, I think that we can try it out without adding it to the ordinance for now and figure out what the right path forward is. Again, and this is no knock, it's just, it is what it is. The terms are three-year terms for the commission members. Youth board members rotate in and out with the school year. And so I think trying to thread that needle and find a path that's successful, I think that's one we might need to do a little work on to find what works best for the youth before we try to codify it. So if that's all right with council, I think we can take a run at trying it out a little less formally, and then, once we figure out a path, we can then come in and amend as needed, if that works.
Awesome.
As long as they are there from the start. I just don't want them to miss out on anything.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. I think the question would be, are they going to be appointed as part of the initial process? Or is it a, someone that's on the current youth board that fills the slot of liaison to the Sustainability Commission? Or a couple of someones, if you will? I think that's the question.
Yeah, I guess me personally, I do like kind of how we do committees. We have like a first and alternate, just so they can also get a... Oh, sorry, Councilmember Ndipure?
Oh, I just had a question. Would it be possible to have some seats for two years and then some for three? Does that, because I know some commissions do it, but then, or does that make it a completely different set of rules for the Sustainability Commission?
So the goal, I appreciate the question, council member. The goal is to set it up so that, basically, you either have two or three commission members up every year, and so that they rotate over that three-year period. And so that's why with the seven, you'll have, you'll see at the beginning, these terms are staggered to reflect that, so that we get into that model, once the commission is up and running, where every year you have seats that are either up again or that rotate.
All right, no, that sounds good. So I guess I didn't close that loop, but I'm good if, you know, if there's not one person that can make it, if they have like an alternate or a backup. But yeah, I think from the beginning, sounds awesome. And then, kind of see who's interested and who would like to rotate and experience that commission would be great. That works, all right.
I'd buy the youth board. They could have it be whoever they want.
Yeah, I think we would set it up to be the youth board appoints the liaisons or whatever, with a term we'd like to use. And then, of course, as the year rolls and new youth board comes, then there'd be new folks that would come on.
All right, council, would anyone like to make the motion to approve?
I would.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the ordinance for the establishment of the Samamish Sustainability Commission, adding a new chapter 2.76 to the Samamish municipal code, providing blah, 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 and an effective date, and that it will include a youth board liaison.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that motion?
I just want to say thank you, and I am so excited. This is such a long time in coming, and I am so stoked that this is actually happening. So thank you.
All right, council, all those in favor of this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great. Thank you, Rose. Are you ready for the next one?
Yes, and we do have Julie online, so we'll go ahead and promote her to a panelist.
Perfect. So for those following along, we are now on to item four, which is the approval for the fleet electrification assessment. Back to Rose.
Skipping forward here, sorry about that. All right. Hello again, good evening. My name is Rose Wyker. I am the Natural Resource and Environmental Sustainability Coordinator in the city manager's office. I'm here tonight to provide an overview of the city fleet electrification consultant selection, initial scope of work, and budget. The City of Samamish Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department manages the purchasing and maintenance of the citywide fleet and equipment. I am joined tonight by Anjali Meyer, the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities, as well as Julie Basak from Makers Architecture and Urban Design, the selected consultant to perform this work. John Arnold, the Facilities and Internal Services Superintendent, will be providing additional staff support for this work. A fleet and equipment assessment was included as part of the 2023 work plan identified by council in January of this year under council's adopted environment goal. As a reminder, in March of this year, the council also set goals to serve as guidelines for the Climate Action Plan. Samamish is committed to a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and a 96% reduction by 2050. The mayor also signed the K4C Joint Commitment Letter in 2019, outlining EV, or electric vehicle, adoption goals for all K4C cities. Makers, the selected consultant, will work to align their analysis with these goals. A key strategy in meeting these goals is the continued electrification of the city's fleet where appropriate, and the city would like to initiate this effort prior to the final plan being adopted. The city posted a request for qualifications for firms interested in providing analysis for and information on the electrification of city vehicles, including current size and electrification status of the fleet, analysis of appropriate fleet vehicles for electrification, given current technology, current and projected costs of electric vehicles and fueling and charging infrastructure, and financing mechanisms and other strategies that could accelerate the transition of the city fleet and equipment to battery and fuel cell electric. There were 12 RFQ submissions and three firms chosen to interview. Makers scored the highest and is subcontracting with McKinstry, a multidisciplinary engineering firm, who will provide electrical engineering and information on financing mechanisms for this work. They will collectively develop a comprehensive, system-wide assessment of electrical vehicle and equipment needs for the city and recommend a strategy for purchase and replacement, inclusive of the support infrastructure required. City Hall and the Maintenance and Operations Centers will be the two main sites of focus out of four, as this is where the majority of our municipal fleet, equipment, and related support infrastructure will be located. Makers estimates a seven-month project schedule. Delays in providing data, reviewing deliverables, and scheduling meetings may impact the schedule. There will be an initial council briefing in quarter one of 2024, followed by a final briefing in quarter two of 2024. This contract will be funded through the 2023-24 Sustainability Budget. This includes a contract with Makers in the amount of $76,450 as a baseline, with $3,500 allowed for optional services that would be used if the city chose to enlist McKinstry for assistance with specific grant writing services. The city is asking council to authorize a 10% contingency over and above this $80,000 for unanticipated additional services, for a total authorization of $88,000. As I mentioned earlier, we have Julie from Makers with us tonight. I wanted to give her a brief opportunity to say hello and address any remaining questions that you may have. If we could promote Julie to a panelist. And Julie, if you could please start by addressing the previous question from council regarding the project timeline and budget. That would be wonderful. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Rose. Very happy to be here and to be thinking about launching this super-important project for the city. I believe the question was related to the schedule and overall budget. I wonder, it would help me if the council member could kind of tell me a little bit more about your confusion or concerns around those, you know, the basics of the project.
You bet, Julie. This is Karen Howell. And my question had to do with, I looked at that timeline and thought it was really quite dramatic in terms of the length of time, given the fact that there's some of this information I think you might already have in your possession. So I think in particular, like, for example, I'm sure there's a very good inventory of what we already have on hand, like, you know, gas-powered versus not gas-powered. That looks like a one-to-one deal, and what's the cost difference? So I, you're going to have to explain to me how, why this is so complicated. I don't understand why you're, we're going to spend $5,000, five, well, over $5,000 on market data, when that data exists. I don't understand why there aren't templates that could be used to propel this forward faster, because it's not like we're the only fish doing this. Many fish are doing this in this particular ocean, and that we could just... Many fish are doing this in this particular ocean, and that we could just lift and use what's already in existence for comparable sites. And the other question I had is, why is it that we would spend money on task four, which is just giving us an idea of possible grants, and no execution at all? So there's a start.
Super. Well, I think there is a number of sort of detailed questions as part of that. I will say that we are definitely starting with all the available information, thank goodness. And we are definitely learning from what other similar communities have done. There is a huge effort to make this happen across the state. We've been involved in a number of those efforts and are also, you know, looking forward to pulling forth any applicable information from other jurisdictions. So yes, we'll be starting, hitting the ground running. So why does it take seven months? I would say that this is driven by a number of things. Number one, the inventorying of city fleet. Yes, we definitely have a great list of your existing fleet. We need to pull together all the information, including emissions reductions, fuel use, mileage, et cetera, right? So it's not just a one-to-one. We need to look at the details of those fleet, and then we need to match them with the appropriate electric vehicle that will replace the vehicles, right? So light-duty vehicles are pretty straightforward, pretty standard, but a medium and heavy-duty fleet definitely takes some analysis and some conversation. So that is part of the inventory timeframe. Another factor with the market data, you're absolutely right, that market data is available, but as you know, it's a complex and very quickly evolving industry. There's things changing all the time in terms of new vehicles being prototyped, or prices coming down. So for every vehicle, we have to update our database with how, what is the price that the city will be able to, you know, have the vehicle, has their, you know, what's their mileage, what is their charging capacity, et cetera. So it's actually quite complex to find the right vehicles for the city of Samamish based on how you are using those vehicles. And so that's a lot of what that inventory, city fleet, and compile market data is about.
Okay, and in terms of the grants, just, you know, there's a big chunk of change out there for just looking at grants, which I'm pretty sure I can do a search and find. So I have that question. On top of that, I have a question. Why is this called a study? That implies that we could either ignore it or not implement it. It doesn't seem to be like a first step of implementation. And so that is concerning to me in and of that itself. And the other piece of this is, is there any advantage at all to having this done faster? Is there anything in your agreement or contract that would allow you to do the work more quickly and get a bonus for that?
All great questions. Okay, so let me take them one by one. The grant work is actually about prioritizing. So there's a tremendous list of grants for, from state and federal agencies. Those are also evolving all the time. Obviously, Commerce has the most appealing, most compelling grants that are out right now. And they, but they even have several, there's incentives, programs, et cetera. So that work is actually about considering what, which of those grant programs is right for Samamish, and making some priority recommendations about what Samamish should focus on, and how to best be competitive to support those grants. So that's what that's about. It's certainly not about just providing a list of grant opportunities that are out there, but even that is a long and evolving list. Does that get to your grant question?
It does, if you're providing information that would help us actually get a grant.
Yeah, so that's the idea, is to look at all the options, which are extensive and would take quite a bit of time to go through and research, come, recommend the highest priorities that we think are most appropriate, most compelling, most helpful to Samamish, and then give you thoughts on how to be most competitive when you apply for those grants. McKinstry actually followed up with Rose today and emailed about this upcoming Commerce grant, asked to see if there was any assistance they could provide, and then trying to support and provide assistance. So there, I will say, they are ready and willing and hopeful that as part of this process, they can support the city in successfully applying for these grants. You had another question about the study?
I did. Why is this called a study? It's not really, because it isn't. I mean, it kind of is, but it also implies that we could just throw it, you know, on the dust heap of history, right? So.
Yeah, I hope, I am not interested in doing a study that is not going to be implemented and take you forward into action. So there's no, no one has an advantage there. I think that's just the name of the project. I think the intention is that council would see this study and recommend that staff implement at the end.
And is there anything in your contract that is to encourage you to speed it up?
So there isn't, but there are opportunities to move faster. I would say we have a schedule that we think is realistic, just based on the amount of analysis, the number of meetings, the number of revisions, et cetera. But if there was an advantage to the city, if a month or six weeks off the end of the schedule was going to help you all hit some dates that you're looking to hit, then we're certainly available for that. And in fact, we worked with Rose and the team to include a near-term EV recommendation as a very early deliverable. So in December, we will be delivering our recommendations for EV purchases for the next budget cycle. So we won't miss that near-term deadline that the city's working for. So you'll be able to launch your next step right there before we're done, and then, you know, have the rest of the time to wrap it up.
Okay.
So sorry, that was a lot of talking. Is there a specific date or an advantage if we were done rather than the end of May? In April, is there a reason that that is a big, is a big difference for the city?
It would be just to try to get it done. And, you know, I'd also ask Julie, just how many of these have you done?
Yeah, well, we've done a number. We've done analysis for the city of Seattle for all of the city fleet, so every department. That was over 3,000 fleet vehicles. We have developed a model that is going to, is the prototype for the model and tool that we're delivering for Seattle, for just Seattle Public Utilities. They have about 1,800 vehicles. We are in the pre-final stage for City of Bainbridge Island. They're a very similar study and community as we are working with you. We have got down to four scenarios, and we're working with the city manager and council. We'll be working with council in the first quarter to try to select the recommendation. I guess that's the other point that might not be super clear, is that the work, there's, there's the work to match the vehicles and figure out what it's going to cost to buy the appropriate electric vehicle. There's the work to analyze each site and figure out what infrastructure upgrades are needed, and the most cost-effective design, is that significant cost is to get your sites ready for electrification, and it can be quite complex in terms of how you approach that from those medium and heavy-duty vehicles that need either fast charging or charging infrastructure that is currently being developed in the market. So you've got, here's what we need, and here's the cost for each site. Then you have to look at it as how, so, okay, what is a coherent strategy to get this infrastructure in and start getting these vehicles, and what does that mean for annual spending for the city? And for City of Bainbridge Island, we needed to look at a number of scenarios, because in order to meet their Climate Action Plan goals, their goals were more aggressive than yours. They would have to find money that even with all the grants available, and it was not going to work. So we had to look at other scenarios and work with staff and council to pick the right fit and the right implementation approach for them. So that's, that's that whole last phase of the project. Task four, exploring phasing strategies, and task five, wrapping it up with a tool that the city can use, and the report is to help you work through those different scenarios and make the right decision for your city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I appreciate all of those questions, Councilmember Howell. I think they're spot-on. And for all the reasons why you say we have to like reassess the market data is all of the reasons why we kind of need to do it faster, because if we start doing that now in seven months, we'll have to do it again. So I do hope we can pick up, I provided some information to staff, the City of Iskua and City of Kimore, they already have plans to convert all of their, I think, light-duty vehicles by 2025, by the end of 2025. So I think there's stuff out there where we can potentially look at phasing sooner. I know that there will be costs involved in purchasing some of these vehicles, but the sooner we purchase them, the sooner we start saving on fuel and maintenance costs. So there's an advantage to, on some of this, to accelerating that. So anything we can do to look at that and make it more of a, to Councilmember Howell's point, an implementation plan, and actually doing it, as opposed to just making a bunch of lists that will update as soon as you hand it to us, would be great.
Yeah, sounds good. And that is one of the key values we hope to provide, is a user-friendly tool that your team will be trained to use and will pilot halfway through the project, and then be ready to wrap when we're done. So that has, that information changes, that tool can change with it. So your budgeting, your carbon emissions, your ability to change out chargers as new ones emerge, change out vehicles as new ones emerge, that will be part of the package that's delivered at the end of this study.
All right, council, are there any other questions, or does anyone want to make a motion to approve this contract award? Okay, I'm not, oh yeah, Deputy Mary Lamb?
I motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Design Makers to complete fleet electrification analysis for the city fleet.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Would you like to speak to that motion?
No, I think the plan is great, and thank you, Julie, for coming here tonight and explaining and giving more detail. Thank you.
All right, council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you, Rose, and thank you, Julie. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, really, could I take a moment of personal privilege? I would like to congratulate Rose on her first council presentation. She did a great job and put a lot of work into preparing for this, so I thought she did a great job.
We will make it more difficult next time. Thank you. All right, we have Mike and Luke. Is Nick anywhere? For our draft 2024 state legislative priorities.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Mike Sugg, supervising management analyst for the City Manager's Office, joined by Luke Esser, one of our two contracted state lobbyists, and I believe Nick Federici, is he online?
En route and apparently attempting to join via Zoom.
En route and attempting to join via Zoom. Fantastic. And I appreciate the council modifying the schedule. You guys were very efficient tonight, and we weren't anticipating being up so quickly, so very much appreciate that. You may recall, back in September, council appointed a legislative committee comprised of councilmembers Howell and O'Farrell to consider some potential recommendations for priorities for the upcoming 2024 legislative session. The committee, which was supported by staff and our contracted lobbyists, considered a variety of ideas during the month of October that we are now putting forward to you tonight. So in your packet for this evening is the committee's recommended list of draft 2024 legislative priorities. And tonight, we're really just looking for any feedback on this list. And at your meeting next week, we will ask for consideration to adopt the list via resolution. But before we run through that list here tonight, I just wanted to turn it over to Luke to provide a brief overview of what we might expect for the upcoming 24 legislative session. Luke?
You bet. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, Luke Esser, one of your state lobbyists. Hopefully, Nick will be joining us shortly, but regardless, we'll be, I'll be ready to handle all of the issues before you. Just a brief overview about the upcoming session. It's what we call a short session of the legislature, a 60-day session where they adopt a supplemental budget in the middle of the two-year biennium, as opposed to the 105-day-long session of odd-numbered years. It goes by really fast, so we're grateful that you are considering and making progress on the city's adopted priorities early. Here we are before Thanksgiving, so that gives us more lead time to touch base with local legislators and other key legislators to make them aware of the city's priorities. So thank you for that. In addition to this being the short session with a supplemental budget, it's worth noting that, in general, revenues for the state have been increasing steadily in recent years, though it's probably also true that their responsibilities have increased even faster than those revenues. And there is continuing concern about the ability to fund programs to deal with issues like affordable housing and homelessness, behavioral health, which are very, very large state priorities and responsibilities. In terms of transportation, there's a continuing challenge that gas tax revenues, which have funded the bulk of our state's transportation system for many years, are a declining revenue source, as we see more and more electric vehicles coming online. And that's why you're seeing consideration of possible road usage charge or miles travel charge. That, there are studies going on of that, but about the only transportation-related funding source that's increasing are the dollars related to the Climate Commitment Act that was adopted a couple of years ago. The cap and trade auctions have been bringing in revenues higher than expected. So there is more revenue in that area. Just to give you a brief overview of areas of particular stress and perhaps opportunity for local governments that are going to state legislators and asking for assistance on various items. So with that overview and background, perhaps, Mike, you wanted to walk through the rest of the program?
Yes, thank you, Luke. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with our list of 2024 priorities. So this is what's in your packet as exhibit one to the agenda bill on this topic. Just as kind of a high-level overview, the committee did discuss shortening the list of priorities compared to what we've presented in the past. And that's really for two reasons. One is, as Luke mentioned, it's going to be a short session this year, so we really have to be focused in what we're requesting. And the second is, you know, we heard during the last legislative session that our list was quite long, and we kind of needed to pick between our favorite priorities that we had. So it kind of indicated that, you know, maybe we should be a little bit more focused for 2024. So that's why what you see in front of you is a bit more pared down than maybe we've presented in the past. So looking at the draft agenda presented by the committee, our first item here is a request to support to raise the property tax 1% limit to track inflation, not to exceed 3%. In addition, we are asking for the legislature's support in enacting progressive revenue options for cities, which do not currently exist. And this priority supports our ongoing fiscal sustainability work, which will be coming back to council next week. The second item we have here is an ask for help in implementing climate action initiatives, such as electrification grants, for example. So to do this, we are requesting that cities be provided with access to the Climate Commitment Act funds that Luke just noted, either through grants or direct distributions. And this obviously supports our ongoing sustainability work and outcomes from the Climate Action Plan. And third, we are requesting funding for one-time, for a one-capital project, which also appeared in our 2023 list of priorities, and that is the Endeavour Elementary School Safe Route and Flood Reduction Project. This project will resolve an ongoing flooding issue along a section of Iskua Falls City Road. That's right in front of Endeavour Elementary School. And it will also install bike lanes, curbs, and sidewalks, so that students are provided safer access to the school. And the benefit to this project is that there are a lot of partners we can ask for support on this priority. For example, Eastside Fire and Rescue, because of the fire station down there, Iskua School District, and potentially King County as well. So those are the three kind of main priorities that the committee is recommending. And as many of you know, we typically have kind of a backside of the one pager where there are kind of regional items that we support, but we're not necessarily taking to lead on. And so the lower list here, that's titled "The City of Samamish Also Supports," includes those items. They include funding for jurisdictions to help address the needs for affordable housing, as well as asking that affordable housing be required in planning for growth near fixed route transit. And these two items were developed by Arch, who requested that member cities add them to their legislative priorities. The next item we have here is The next item we have here is supporting the state's continued use of Climate Commitment Act funding to support multimodal transportation improvements. Then we have access to behavioral health resources for adults and youth. And finally, a request from our insurance carrier, Washington Cities Insurance Authority, to lobby for containing the rise in city insurance costs resulting from the legislature's expansion of cities' liability and related policies. And finally, we do typically show support for a handful of our partner organizations' legislative agendas. And so that's what we've done here. At the moment, we have Association of Washington Cities, King County Cities Climate Collaboration, and YR8, as well as SCA. And those links go directly to either the adopted or the draft version of the priorities, if you'd like to check those out. So that's what the recommendation coming out from the legislative committee was. The last thing I'll mention is that our lobbyists, Luke and Nick, are reaching out to our legislative delegation to schedule a joint meeting between our council and the delegation on December 12th. So the intent is that we will share the city's priorities, and the legislators will share their priorities, and we'll have a little bit of a discussion on that. This is something that council has historically done and has worked quite well before the session. As part of that, the legislative committee did discuss potentially having each council member volunteer to be responsible for one of the priorities. So it's not just staff or our lobbyists speaking about them. It's coming from the council members directly. So if that's desired, either tonight or when we come back with this item next week, council could assign roles. And of course, staff, Luke and Nick, would help to develop speaking points for you all. And so tonight, we are not requesting any action. This is just an opportunity for feedback. And next Tuesday, we'll return with a resolution for adoption. With that, I will stop talking and turn it over to the mayor and mayor, potentially, councilmembers O'Farrell or Howe would like to add any context that I may have missed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you both for doing this. Councilmember Nupure?
Thank you. I just have a few questions. So on the property tax, the first priority that we've listed, are there any bills that were proposed last year? What is the atmosphere like? How realistic is it to pursue this particular goal?
There have been bills offered for many years, and it is a challenging ask. But I am seeing, we are seeing, many more cities and local governments joining the request. It's one of the top-tier priorities for the Association of Washington Cities. The AWC adopted three tiers of priorities, and that top tier is four issues. And one of them is the revised arbitrary property tax cap. So it will continue to remain a challenge, but I think there's more shoulders to the wheel now, more than ever. So perhaps more hope than ever that this issue might be able to advance.
So advance, but so we're just building the momentum?
We'd love to get across the finish line, but even getting this bill out of one house would be an advance over what's been possible in recent years.
Great. Yeah, thanks for that clarification. Mike, did I hear Fire Station Endeavor? I didn't quite catch that, what you were saying, for the Endeavor Flood Reduction Project?
Yeah, so that's right along Isquah Falls City Road. And I believe it, city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, is that Fire Station 83? That's right along there? Right, so when the road floods, it can prevent access along Isquah Falls City Road to Fire Station 83 for eastside fire and rescue. So they have to divert through an alternative route, which could add time to their response.
I think I need to figure out where that station is, because I live near Clehanian. I'm not picturing that, so. Near Sunny? That's not Isquah Falls City. That's Pine Lake.
All right, sorry, we're having a problem. Nobody knows what's in Semamish.
So anyway, I don't recall a fire station on Isquah Falls City Road, so just wanted that clarification. Yeah, I don't think there is one. So excited about the delegation coming here. Will there be sort of like a lobby day for the council members as well to go to Olympia and advocate on behalf of the city?
The AWC always has a couple of day, their city action days lobbying. Now, it's always a debate in our minds between whether you want to join hundreds of your colleagues from around the state charging up Capitol Hill all in the same day, or would you rather come on some other day when you might have the field more to yourself, so to speak? We're happy to assist in scheduling meetings in whatever form works for schedules of the elected officials. We think it's ideal to get elected officials there. We're happy to be your spokespeople, but we think there's a gravitas that's added and a peer-to-peer relationship between elected officials when the council members can go up and lobby the local legislators.
Great. And I think I had, I think councilmember Howe forwarded the email that I'd forwarded to them. Can you speak a little bit about those two bills that I'd asked? Yeah. So I think it's one with the traffic stops, and the other one is accountability from the AG's office, so.
Yes, and I did forward to a few of the council members and some of the city staff some of the official bill reports that the nonpartisan staff at the legislature prepared for those. And I'm happy to list a brief summary of both of those bills. The first one is House Bill 1513, an act relating to improving traffic safety by addressing compliance enforcement and data collection. And there's four major parts of that bill. The first is that it limits officers' ability to use stops and detentions for non-moving violations as a primary offense and specifies additional process requirements for traffic stops. The second element is it requires written consent before an officer may search a vehicle or its passengers. The third, it requires an officer to prepare a detailed report for each stop or detention. And fourth, it creates a grant program focused on interventions for non-moving violations for low-income road users. And so those are the four elements of the House Bill 1513. And there are three elements to House Bill 1545, an act relating to strengthening and clarifying the authority of the Attorney General to address law enforcement and local corrections agency misconduct through investigations and legal actions. The first element is that it authorizes the Attorney General to investigate and bring actions against law enforcement and corrections agency for violations of our state constitution or state law. The second, it requires the Attorney General to confer with the Office of Impendent Investigations, which is a state agency, and the U.S. Department of Justice. And third, it requires the Attorney General to develop and publish model policies in consultation with various agencies and entities. And I know there's a very, very broad overview. The full bill report, even the summary, goes on for several pages. So that's certainly the high-level summary of those two bills.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Just to follow on to that, just so that I understand, where, how likely is it that those two initiatives could advance? I was looking at who supported them, and I also saw that there were some names that were sort of like to the side of it, like it was as if they hadn't rendered an opinion.
Both of those bills were House bills that made it out of at least one House committee, but did not make it out of the full House. So they only made it partway through the process. We have a, in the same way that we have a two-year budget cycle at state government, there's a two-year legislative cycle. So those bills are still alive for the upcoming short session, and the legislature will have an opportunity to consider them again during the 60-day session.
Okay, that's really helpful. And then to just go back to what you were saying earlier about the legislative priorities that we've set for Semamish, it is a short list, like you guys have seen. You'll also find that 1% trying to get out of that property tax cap. You'll also find that redundant in the eastside fire and rescue legislative priorities. So I'd like to add them as one of the partner agencies that we reference because of that. They also pick up a different thing that we don't have on this, which is PFOS, because we have a different push there that we feel like that needs to be something that is picked up at the state level, the federal level, in terms of what's going to be happening there. PFOS, just given its spread. So you won't see it in this document, but you will see it in the eastside fire and rescue legislative agenda. I'd be, I'm sure that O'Farrell, Councilmember O'Farrell and I would be very interested in any comments that you have and questions or concerns about this list, if there's things that bug you, do you think we're missing something? Ritu just obviously brought up a couple of points that she feels is missing and are worthy to be addressed. So they don't, for me, they didn't tuck into anything obvious. It would be, if, to me, it would go onto that last page of also RANs, but not a priority. But that is an opinion. So I'd be very, so I want to hear from other people, I guess.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had, Luke, I just had kind of a question about our budget request for the Endeavor Elementary School and State Roots to School. And we mentioned a couple of other agencies that it would be in their interest as well, that this would be rectified. What's our likelihood of getting the $1 million we're requesting? Is there something further that we need to do as a jurisdiction to help our cause and help get that over the line? Because I know it's something that has come up through public comment from our residents, that this is definitely an issue we would like to rectify. So is there something more that we should be doing that we have not done in the past?
Well, I think in addition to getting a good early start, which you are this year in making clear your priorities, it always helps to have other voices, to have allies, a coalition, so to speak. So to the extent, and I'm just, you know, blue-skying here, to the extent, the local PTSA at Endeavor or the school officials there, neighborhood associations, some mention was made of eastside fire and rescue. Anyone else that could lend their voice to the chorus of us appealing to local legislators for help and funding of that can only be helpful in our efforts.
And is that something in the past that we've done where we have gone out to other agencies? Scott, do you know, to kind of garner support to help us with an agenda item like this, a priority like this? Do we have a system in which we do that, or is that kind of new territory for us?
It's new in my tenure here, is what I would say. I'm not necessarily familiar with it within the past, but from the perspective of someone that has worked with Luke on and off over the years on this kind of stuff, having a coordinated and singular goal and lining up your partners always boosts your chance of success 100%. It's the same for grants. It's the same for anything that you decide to go after. Political leadership and then getting your community on board is the biggest key to success. It takes a village to fund a project, is how I would term it. So the more that we can be clear when we, I mean, you all can be clear about what your priority is on these, especially regarding projects, and then we can start to go out and build that coalition. And legislators see that kind of stuff, and they want, they reward those that are, you know, more regional projects. The more partners you have, the more that they know that it's something that the whole community wants, and it's not just the council that wants to achieve it.
Yeah, because I think it would be nice to be able to have a win, you know? I'm sure we'd all like a win. And I think if we can go down that route and kind of go after this, you know, and kind of figure out our system of how we're going to get this done, because I think it would be great as a body to have a win on one of our priorities and the community can see that this, you know, how, that this is working. So I would really like to work on this and make something like this happen in '24. I think that would be a really big win for this council, if we could do that.
And I think there are several wonderful arguments that can be advanced in favor of this proposal. I mean, it's about multimodal transportation. It's about public safety. It's about climate resilience. There's just a lot of different, you know, advantages to this project that I think anybody can speak to the local legislators about.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mary Lamb?
Hi, Luke. Thank you for being here.
You bet.
I'd like to see the rap act in our priorities. Can you give us an update on where that's at currently? Because last year, it didn't make it out of the floor, correct? And speaking with our neighboring cities, other council members, there is broad support from our neighboring cities for that particular bill. So could you, like, fill us in on what's happening with that?
I know, and Nick, of course, who's the one who's not with us, has been a little bit more directly involved with it. But I know that there's, it's been a high priority for a number of cities moving forward, both to address the ecological side, but also the financial side of an unnecessary garbage collection of items that could be better recycled and reused. So I think there's an expectation that that bill has a better chance of success, that the work that's gone into it previously was necessary groundwork for this effort that will hopefully pay some dividends in that the topic will be, you know, less unfamiliar to people, and there'll be an ability to address concerns that popped up along the way. So I think there is an expectation that there's a, you know, a very good chance of passing that legislation this year.
Okay, that'd be great. And for everybody on council that's not familiar with it, it's extended, it's for extended producer responsibility that the producers of waste basically has to pay into a fund to help municipalities pay for their recycling services. No, so that, so no, that's great. I think it would fit perfect under the climate action initiatives. I mean, right now, it's speaking about greenhouse gas emissions, but it is part of our Climate Action Plan, so if it could be, like, tucked in there.
Mayor, if I may respond to that, I think one of the positives of setting up our legislative priorities like this is to give a lot of leeway to our lobbyists to be able to advocate. And I believe in reading what it says that that would fall within that, the moniker of Climate Commitment Act funding, because it falls under, it's a, you know, it's a climate-related piece. And so I think, I think that's the, what we're trying to do, because the session goes so fast, is to give sort of broad policy direction, if you will, to our lobbyists to be able to act on our behalf on specific bills, because they change fast enough that coming back to council during the session is not, the decision's already made and done before we would ever get it on the agenda, and, you know, if we wanted to add something. So I think this gives enough latitude that our lobbyists can respond to that when it comes up and that, assuming council's okay, that we'll sign in support of that and work on that issue.
Okay, so I'm not clear. Would that be included in this or not included in this?
Yes, I was, I'm sorry. I should have been more clear. I believe that it's included in that description, that it's a climate, it's a climate commitment, and it's, this is reducing greenhouse gases, and it falls in that category.
Can we specifically write the rap act, though? I don't know what it's going to be called this year, though.
I haven't heard a new terminology, but I think it would be very, very clear if you heard of it as the rap act or its successor, something along those lines.
That would be great. Thank you, Luke.
Councilmember Stewart?
Okay, I just have to say, Mike, there's no SAM. Sorry. So for anybody who doesn't know, for many years now, Mike has done an incredible job of coming up with an acronym for their three categories so that it always spells SAM. So I have to say, I had to, like, get over my disappointment of not seeing the SAM. No, all kidding aside, thank you all for working on this. This is awesome. One of the things, Luke, that if I recall, was that more specificity is usually helpful, right? So when we go ask our legislators for something, we're very clear. So for example, the enact progressive revenue options, I totally support that. I think that's great. But then we sort of just leave it out there. Is there something specific that's potentially on the table that we should be asking them for so that we can be really clear to them?
Well, as if on cue, I'm told that Nick Federici has joined us via Zoom. And I know he works extensively in this area.
Greetings, as if on cue. My apologies for being tardy for this meeting. Yeah, there are a couple, I think, local revenue options that are under discussion that are progressive in nature. One is looking at lifting the 1% property tax lid that was put in place about 20 years ago for counties and cities. And so that's something that's definitely under serious conversation. In addition, the possibility of a local option, real estate excise tax to fund affordable housing in jurisdictions that would be council manic in nature. But that authority would have to be granted by the legislature. Those are two specific revenue options for local governments that I know are, will be under serious consideration this year.
Okay, so I think for the, one, I'd like, if we're going to have a whole section on progressive revenue options, which, again, totally support, I think we should talk about progressive revenue options. progressive revenue options first, because I don't think the property tax option is necessarily all that progressive in nature. So I'd like to see that. And when we talk about the lifting the 1% cap, we say so that it tracks with inflation. Is that specifically what the bill is about? Is that it would be tied to some sort of an index?
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
No, you can, Nick, you go right ahead.
The conversation that has been in place with that it would be no higher than inflation, or that it would track with inflation, but no higher than some other cap rather than 1%. So some people have talked about 3%, 5%, 6%, but no higher than inflation. I think that still is to be determined by the folks who are going to be working on that legislation. So there's a number of different ways to skin that. My suspicion is it'll be, you know, commensurate with inflation, but no more than 3%. That has sort of seemed to be the political over-under, if you will, of what folks are comfortable with.
That sounds nice, but let's be honest, we're not going to see inflation under 3% for a really long time. But, so I like these. I would love to see us, if we have some other more progressive revenue options that we want to push, making that the top priority. Maybe also just sort of listing what the things are that we're asking for, and then just having one explanation for both of them, because I think the explanation applies to everything in that category. That might help us make a little more space so that we can, because when I get to number two, like Deputy Mayor Lamb, I would like to see us be a little bit more specific on what it is we want to see. There are a lot of climate action bills being bantered about, even for a short session. And so I think we do need to be specific about which ones we really want to push. Based on our conversation last week from our climate action plan, there are a couple of bills that are being bantered about that would actually tie in very nicely. There's a Retirement of Fossil Fuel Energy Supply Bill. There's a Distributed Solar Energy Generation Bill. There's a Net Zero Buildings by 2030 Bill. And then there's also policies for funding building retrofits. So I think it might be interesting for us to take a look at saying, you know, we want to support local climate initiatives, and then let's get really specific, because I feel like the Climate Commitment Act funding, again, let's be more specific. What exactly are we asking them to do? Are we just at, because when we say improve access to, yes, but what specifically? Like, do we, is it really just about including, like, direct distributions? Because, again, because it moves quickly, I feel like, and that felt like a lot of the questions, I don't know, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Howe, last year when we met with our legislators, they kind of asked us those questions. So I'm sort of trying to get ahead of that, where they were like, well, what is it that you want exactly for us to do? So I think we could get a little bit more prescriptive and precise there with that. And I also support putting in the Extended Producer Responsibility under the climate initiatives. And, yeah, I'm happy. One of the other things, too, for the, specifically for the RAP Act, that in following up with some of the legislators at the end of last year, because I actually thought it was going to make better progress, might be that we consider actually testifying. So what I heard was that there were a whole lot of lobbyists who came and lobbied against the RAP Act, and there weren't a whole lot of people there lobbying for it. So as we, you know, look at going, potentially going to Olympia, that may be an area where our time might be better spent, is to see if we can't get in there and have a few people and maybe even rally some resources to get in and help to balance out all of the industry lobbyists that were there with all of the reasons why we can't do better, and we can provide some as to why we can. So that, those are just some of the ideas there. As far as the, sort of, the next page of the other stuff, it's curious to me, I'm not totally clear why we want to include the insurance company stuff. I feel like insurance companies have lots of lobbyists, and do we really want to take up space on the containing the rising city insurance costs? Is that specifically about city liability? Is that protecting against all liability expansion? Like, what does that mean? I'm not sure I'm clear on what that is.
The most prominent bill that we discussed in the committee is one that would apply not just to cities, but would change the date from which interest accrues on civil judgments. Current law is that when a court enters a judgment, interest accrues from that date forward, whereas there's proposed legislation that would move backwards in time to the point of the incident which gave rise to the lawsuit, and the interest would accrue from that point forward after a judgment had been entered for the plaintiff. So that would, that would raise costs for everyone, all insureds as well as cities. But we certainly see from the entity that ensures a lot of cities concerns that that will exacerbate the existing situation.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with this one. I think I need to learn more about what it is we're asking them to do or not do with this, and who it would affect and how it would affect them, before I'd be willing to kind of throw my name onto that one. And again, it could be perfectly justified. I just don't know much about it, and it, it sounds pretty broad in nature, and I think there are some places in legislature where we might want more accountability and liability. I don't know. And then the other one that came from Arch, I'm sorry to jump around, Mike, where it talks about the ensuring we have affordable housing near fixed route transit. I thought that was part of what was already passed in terms of affordable housing.
Well, and Nick's been involved in these ones, too. Nick, do you want to talk about the transit-oriented development legislation?
Absolutely. There is, there have been several bills that have dealt with fixed route transit. There was House Bill 1110, the quote-unquote middle housing bill last year that had some references towards that. I think the, what this is referencing is the specific legislation around transit-oriented development, and, and that would be Senate Bill 5466, House Bill 1517, that dealt with requiring local jurisdictions to incorporate greater density. The two of the, two of the main questions around that were where, you know, folks talk about sort of fixed, rapid, you know, rapid transit, bus rapid transit, which isn't so fixed.
Right.
The stuff that is really fixed is transit centers, transit stations, and, and for those that have it or soon to have it, the sound transit stations. And then there's a separate school of thought that is, hey, let's, let's use where there is bus rapid transit right now and organize development around those station areas, which is a little more loosey-goosey, and, and I would say folks are concerned about too much of a slippery slope there that provides too many opportunities for development that isn't in a more stable fashion, right? I mean, stuff that's around built infrastructure that already exists or that is anticipated to soon exist is a lot more stable place to build housing around than a transit line that may or may not exist or may or may not occur in the future. The other piece of, that Arch has, has been very involved in the conversations on, has been whether affordability should be part of the consideration. The bills that, that moved forward from the Senate did not have any requirements for affordability, and, and the bills, as they were fine-tuned in the House, did include affordability requirements, and that was one of the sticking points. And ultimately, one of the major reasons the bill did not move forward was the disagreement over, over whether or not to include affordability requirements, and if so, how much and at what a level of income.
Okay, that was a lot. Thank you, Nick.
Sorry.
No, it was very thorough. So I guess here, like, again, definitely want to support the affordable housing pieces. I think what I took from what you said was Arch is more in favor of pushing for the affordable housing requirements near fixed route, not just high capacity, because I think that some of the other bills I saw talked about making sure we had affordable housing requirements near high-capacity transit. And that's not exactly the same as fixed route, I don't believe.
To try to do a better job of answering your question this time, I think Arch is particularly concerned about including the affordability requirements and incentives as well, but ultimately requirements. And the Association of Washington Cities, I think, position is fewer locations is better than more locations. And so fixed route transit and, and built infrastructure like transit stations is a better place to organize development around than bus rapid transit that may or may not change as funding or, or other things fluctuate.
So are we really just saying light rail? Is that what this really means?
I think it generally means light rail and, and transit stations or transit centers, I guess, is the right terminology.
So it could include, like, rapid transit, but only if there are centers that have been built, like?
Correct.
Okay.
Mike, am I representing that accurately?
Yeah, I believe so. And, you know, I will talk with our community development director after this meeting and try and get out some more information to council on this topic.
Excellent. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
Thanks. I just wanted to ask a quick question about the idea of going down in person, not with everybody else, not with the, our peers. If that's an advantage, I think we should consider it. And I'm wondering, in order to bring the PTSA along with us when we go in to get money for Endeavor, can we just bring in an iPad and a Zoom to allow people to participate that way, as opposed to trying to physically drag them down there? We might be able to do that. I don't want to have our, trying to coordinate with partners slow us down from getting our work done.
Yes, that is certainly possible. Getting a, a letter with several logos of organizations on it is another popular tactic in Olympia to show that coalition behind a proposal.
A 60-second video.
Yep.
Just a, you know, massive people in support of this. Because when it comes down to it, like, when we got asked, what's your favorite child? My favorite child is going to be Endeavor and $7 million. The other stuff that we're talking about is great stuff, and I want to come home with $7 million for the city. So that's where I'm at, just to be really clear.
I mean, my, my take on that, councilmember, would be that the harder it is for you to do, the more seriously the legislators take your advocacy, right? So dragging people down there is difficult and challenging, but it also demonstrates with people voting with their feet that they're behind this proposal. So I would say all of the above, including going down for city action days, as well as a separate, a separate day to be able to meet with your delegation, I would think is advisable, particularly something for as expensive, for lack of a better term, and as of importance as the Endeavor project.
Councilmember Trine.
So if I heard this right, the, Luke and Mike, you pretty much said, less is more. That's what I heard pretty loud and clear. The less items that we have on this, the better. So I'd say limit it to the top three that you have there. Put two, one on the front, two on the back, and, and then really like Councilmember Howe's suggestion that we do a little bit of work and actually get one of them and put that kind of effort into it. So that, that would be my suggestion and direction, would be to literally limit it to three items, especially if you're going to change some of the verbiage on the first two or three to include some of the other items that were mentioned by the other council members under the top three. Thanks.
Yeah, I think these are good. I'm definitely for getting whatever kind of support in whatever media. Sounds great. Yeah, and thank you for coming up with this. So you'll come back in December, you said?
We'll be back with you next week.
Oh, next week.
So we'll incorporate any updates. We'll provide some additional information between now and then, and then hopefully, if council's okay with it, it will be, sorry, what's that, Councilmember Stewart? Oh, Councilmember Stewart wants the acronym, the SAM.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So we'll get all that information together, and hopefully in a package that council's ready to adopt next week. And then on December 12th is when we have our legislative delegation scheduled to come out and meet with us.
Got it. So if we think of a really good idea in the middle of the night, would you like emails or anything else, you know, until, you know, next Tuesday, or what would, if anyone has questions or thoughts or ideas?
Yeah, well, we need to get the pack materials ready this week for next week's agenda. So if you have any additional thoughts within the next couple of days, it'd be great.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for joining us, Nick, and thank you, Luke and Mike. Do we have anything else?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All righty. So next up, we have our discussion on solid waste 2024 rates and communications update. So looks like Audrey, Genevieve, Wendy, Jeanette probably are all online.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Audrey Starsee, Public Works Director for the city. And this evening, sorry, waiting as the team comes on here, Jeanette Jorgensen, with been there consulting the city's consultant support services for solid waste collections, will be presenting on both our 2024 solid waste collection rates, as well as providing an update to council on our community outreach. Jen Waker with, I'm sorry, Jen Rubenelli with the city's Public Works Department, our management analyst, and Wendy Waker with Republic Services will be available for questions, as will I. And whenever you're ready, Jeanette, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Audrey. Good evening, council and guests. It's an honor to be back in front of you again with an update on solid waste. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an update to council on the solid waste rates and the communication and outreach efforts related to the integration of Kohani into the city's solid waste contract. As you can see in the table in front of you, we listed out the most common residential service level, which is the 32- to 35-gallon cart, which includes embedded recycling and yard waste. So your current rates under the 2023 contract have a service component, a disposal component making up the monthly rate. And for those of you that are good enough, you will see these two dotted up, that one cent is due to rounding. So I just want to point that out, and it's not a typo. It's just rounding. The next item on this table has the 2023 Kohani rates for the similar service with recycling and yard waste. And then the next line after that has no yard waste, it's just the 32-gallon garbage with recycling. And we do not have the service and disposal components for the UTC. We only have the final rates. And the very bottom line shows the 2024 rates. So you can see there is a service component increase, which we presented, the disposal component increase announced due to the King County costs. And then you can see the monthly rates for these three service levels will be going up City staff and Republic staff have been working very hard to prepare communications for the community. There have been multiple meetings with the Kohani HOA and the sub HOAs, and so these are, have been going on and will continue. Updates specifically for Kohani have been going out through their HOA. In mailboxes, right before Halloween, residents of Kohani received Republic Services' letter alerting them of all the changes. And then the new mailer should be received in mailboxes, expect within the next week or so. And this has a repeat of the information, plus the entire service guide, which talks about all the benefits, the current rates, the, what can be recycled, and the preparation guidelines. And then in early December will be the rollout of the new garbage and yard waste carts. So even though billing does not start until January, residents will be getting their new carts starting in early December. So the citywide communications include that annual service mailer. Again, on the Kohani, they get extra material explaining the changes between the UTC and the city contract. But the rest of the city will have information that is the generic stuff, such as what is recyclable, the extra benefits, such as the curbside collection of materials, preparation guidelines. guidelines. And then the commercial sector has additional information on the outreach available. So those will be going out next week. The city and Republic have worked on sharing the comprehensive FAQs, so really answering residents' questions about what is happening during this transition. The websites are updated with those FAQs and also with the new rates. There'll be an article going out in the city's winter newsletter a little bit later this month, so right after Thanksgiving. And then social media postings will be ongoing. So trying to communicate to the community through a variety of avenues. That's a screenshot of the mailers that are going out. As you can see, they're full color and they have very clear information about all the different information, I'm sorry, all the different materials that can be diverted. And then the curbside pickup. And so we've really tried to communicate all of this information. And that was just a very brief overview. And city staff, Republic staff, or I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much, council. Councilmember Howe?
So it's early days. Have you gotten any feedback? That's my first question. I mean, we just got our mailer today, for example. It was open on the counter, and my husband was staring at it with awe and amazement because it was a lovely, lovely piece. So I, at least that's starting to hit, but I'm just curious. Have you, has anything hit you guys staff-wise from public? We're just too early.
From the city's staff side, we have not received any feedback yet.
Okay. And this is a general question for, for Wendy, and I'm just hoping you could just educate me a little bit. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not asking to change our rates or anything like that, but it's a rate question. So Republic, okay, actually it's Waste Management, has something called a senior rate. And so when they do their rate schedule, I happened to see that because Auburn just listed their, their rates that it just shifted and changed because it was a public notice. So I wondered, do you have the kind of the equivalent because it's a smaller can? Or is there such a thing as a senior rate that Republic has in their fee schedule? Or is it just something that we could discuss at a later time? Because I think you understand my, my, my point. You know, people aren't generating as much refuse, smaller can, maybe not paying as much, things like that. And I really want to thank the Assistant City Manager for, for getting back to me with some information just about. Very few of our residents have missed payments, from what I understand. So there doesn't seem to be a financial burden that residents aren't able to meet, that's just appearance-wise, just looking at the data. But would love to know just if you have any information at all for me about that senior rate idea?
Yeah. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Howe. Definitely, it's something you'd want to consider in your next RFP. Rate making is kind of a complicated endeavor, given the service components, given the disposal components, given the whole new rate restructure we just did with King County recently. There are ways to sort of implement a low-income program as well as a senior program and a disabled program. So they're very different categories that can be built into different rate classes in the next contract. It's hard to do that now, given that we've just finalized these rates for the next year and we have five years to go before contemplating a longer RFP for your city going forward now that we have both jurisdictions combined under one contract. So it's something that other cities have taken advantage of, and it's something the UTC is considering in their areas. And I'll just say part of that requires partnership with the city because typically that kind of program is determined with city utility billing. So it's tied to sort of whatever programs you have similarly for your water payment programs through the city. So Republic and most waste haulers aren't in the business of sort of tracking eligibility for that. So we really require the partnership with the city to identify which segments of your population you want to consider for subsidized rates or additional support to, to keep the services going.
Thanks, Wendy. I think it's just a good general question to ask so that we just kind of tee ourselves up for the future. So thank you.
And one message, just you asked about communications. We're getting good communications with the Kohani HOA on, on all the different residents there and the changes that are coming. So that's a great partnership. Got to thank your city staff and the HOA leadership there for that. And one way to control cost is to control your consumption and, and adjust your garbage cart size to bring it down to that lower level without contaminating the organics or recycling carts that are going to be those big standard sizes. So we're happy to work with customers one-on-one to figure out how to right-size whatever garbage services they might need as kids go off to college, or they bring kids back from school, or have other generations living with them. So we are used to working with our customers and take those inquiries one by one as they come through our call center.
And you know, I think that that kind of flexibility is going to work really well for us, so I appreciate that.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Deputy Mary Lamb?
So just to kind of following up on what Councilmember Howe was talking about is the, some sort of utility bill assistance. I think that would be great. You know, other cities have it. And you mentioned that that would be something we could look at with our next contract negotiation. So our current contracts start in 2017, correct?
I think that's correct, yeah.
So our contract, I mean, these are really long contracts. So we haven't had any sort of modification other than rate increases for like, what? We're like 11 years, you know? We're looking at another five years before we're, we could amend this. But we could amend this. We could, you know, come back to the table and have a discussion. I just think that it is really timely now. And, and I know it was a really heavy lift to do the rate restructure this past year, but given everything that's been happening, you know, just in terms of the organics law that has passed, we're looking at adopting a new climate action plan. We're looking at meeting our goals for waste diversion. And I don't know how we're going to get there if we can't, if we don't amend our contract. And I think, you know, we had, I kind of had the similar, you know, I'm on the Solid Waste Committee and I actually asked that question, which I'm glad you answered. So, you know, looking at what other cities have in their contracts with, with Republic, particularly Renton, that they have garbage service every other week. So it's garbage and recycle every other week. And their rate, their monthly rate for that is $26. And we're looking at $47. But that's a huge difference, which kind of goes back to, is there utility bill assistance? So we'll have one-third of Kohani residents who are going to be seeing their bill go up from $30 to $47, which I think is, you know, is going to be a hardship for some people, particularly in Kohani, which, you know, there's quite a few people that are on the lower income spectrum. So just to kind of go back to what Renton offers is that they have garbage service every other week, and it's $26. And they started that in 2008. And so that has been really productive and successful for them for waste diversion. And I do think that, that we are at a point now where we need to be responsible and have and implement every other week service and have people opt in to weekly service if they so choose. Like, I wouldn't want to take away people's right to have weekly service, but, you know, in order to meet our waste diversion goals, we'd have to implement some sort of every other week service. So, go ahead.
I was going to say you're absolutely correct in, in that. And I, I just want to be really clear that we can absolutely update this contract in the next several years as your council wants to do that. And I think your Sustainability Commission that you just put together is a good place to review some of the policies that are being done in other cities. And there are different revenue streams that you could adopt to, to go with that. And every other week garbage would require quite a bit of communication and clarity around that because a lot of residents don't like every other week collection. And Renton is the only one that's doing it at the moment. And I think there's a lot of analysis of that and what, if, if that's going to work going forward in Renton. So we'd want to really do a deeper dive on what's happening in Renton, what's going forward, and what the rates might look like when they have a new contract extension. We've seen lately, as I think Jen and Jeanette pointed out in previous council meetings, that rates with new contracts are going up between 40% and 60% throughout the region. So in that regard, Samamish has a great opportunity here to take a breather in the next few years, make some contract tweaks along the way to meet your sustainability goals that you have in the short run, while also really getting that, that wish list together of what you really want to see in the next RFP. And there are other cities that are dropping RFPs with all manner of alternatives. So they're sort of the base service. And then there's the what-if list that you can ask the bidders to come back with. Is it every other week garbage? Is it electric vehicles? Is it extended recycling lists? You know, all of those components that you think would serve Samamish residents best, we can certainly look at in the interim five years and you can bring forward with your next RFP and, and let, let all the numbers and possibilities kind of come together in the analysis that it takes to do sort of more extensive RFP process. So I, I trust your staff and leadership at the city to kind of keep track of what the council does in the short term and then really get a robust proposal together when you're ready to, to go to RFP. But this contract in the short term is absolutely amendable, and you have some good legal support and good staff support to, to evaluate those and determine how speedy to implement some current changes. But for now, I'll say the speed at which we've been able to implement the rate restructure, integrate Kohani into Samamish, kind of do this communication and the swapping out of carts over the holidays while we all kind of catch our breath while the inclement weather comes and hopefully not too much snow. I think February, when your commission starts again, it might be great to add this book of work to their work plan and, and maybe do some council update later in the spring. And then if you want to make some changes, the time to do that is sort of late summer, early fall, so that we have some time to do the rate impacts and analysis that would have to occur kind of that September, October timeframe for implementation every January. So that's the cadence of how rate making and program amendments and contract changes happen. And I know Jen's keenly aware of that. So, so we can get there for whatever appetite your council has for, for making some changes once we catch our breath after this integration here in the next several weeks.
That sounds great, Wendy. And the timeline sounds really good, too. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, council. Do we have any other questions while we have our professionals on the line? Awesome. All right. Well, thank you all. Thank you all for your hard work. I think that is it, right? Just as, yeah, nothing to vote on. Yeah, we're good. Awesome. Well, thank you, Wendy. I think you're the only one that can leave. Oh, no, Jeanette, you too. Okay. All right. Have a good evening, you two. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Jeanette.
All right, Audrey. King County?
John and I are staying. So Dorian Waller with King County, he is our Government Relations Administrator with King County Solid Waste Division, has joined us as we present the REPLUS pledge to council for their consideration this evening. Jen will be leading the presentation this evening. So Jen, whenever you're ready, go ahead. And welcome, Dorian, and thank you again for joining us.
Okay. Everyone see my screen? Wonderful. So good evening, council. As Audrey said, my name is Jen Rubenelli, and I'm joined here tonight by Dorian Waller. And we are here tonight because the city of Samamish has the opportunity to sign the REPLUS pledge and join the 19 other cities who have signed the pledge as a show of commitment towards the purpose of working with King County collaboratively to reach shared goals and accelerate the region's progress towards a zero-waste circular economy. And King County published the REPLUS plan earlier in 2023, and the city council previously received a presentation on REPLUS and the REPLUS pledge in December of last year. So why is this important and why now? So some background, around 70% of what goes into King County's Cedar Hills Regional Landfill each year is recyclable. It is estimated that recycling, recovering, and preventing this waste in the first place would eliminate as much as 100,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions. So by transitioning from a linear economy to a circular economy, where there's a much larger focus on reusing existing materials in our system, we could reduce the amount of material headed for the landfill, lower greenhouse gas emissions, and actually extend the life of the landfill, which on a business-as-usual trajectory is expected to reach capacity by 2040. And extending the life of the landfill will reduce everyone's costs in the long run by delaying the need for more expensive long-term waste disposal options. So King County launched REPLUS to address all of these issues. So this graphic shows from 2019 to 2030, the intended impact of REPLUS. And REPLUS aims to reduce the amount of waste going to the landfill and increase the amount of materials that are kept or reintroduced to our economy. Okay? And so now on screen are the REPLUS action items. And these are actions that are identified in the REPLUS plan. The most important action items to the city of Samamish at this time are the REPLUS city grants and the city-county collaboration. So if the city joins the pledge, then Samamish will be eligible for REPLUS city grants. And if the city does not sign the pledge, then Samamish is not eligible for the REPLUS grants. And these grants are competitive opportunities for King County cities to fund innovative zero-waste and recycling programs. Okay, so how does the REPLUS pledge align with the city's goals and interests? The REPLUS pledge and grant opportunity is identified in the draft Climate Action Plan as WE 1.6, as seen on the screen. And if the city chose to join the pledge, then the city would be making progress towards the climate action goals identified in the draft cap. And the city of Samamish is also part of the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, also known as the K4C. And the goals of REPLUS are aligned with K4C goals. Okay, so on screen is a recommended motion, should the council decide to join the REPLUS pledge, the city and King County's REPLUS program have a common goal of protecting the natural environment. The city can show its commitment to waste reduction and partnership with the county by signing the pledge. And there is no financial commitment or commitment of staff time and resources above and beyond our current activities by signing the pledge at this time. All right. And the King County REPLUS website, along with my and Dorian's contact information is on screen. That concludes this presentation. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jen, and thanks for being here, Dorian. Council, oh, I think Deputy Mary Lamb would be the great one to make this motion. But if anyone has questions or comments?
Yeah, go ahead. I'd just like to know quickly just how many cities have signed on to this? I mean, it seems like a great thing to do. And in terms of the grant opportunities, have any ever been issued?
Yes, so, so far 19 cities have, and grants have been awarded through cities, from the form of my recollection. One's in Shoreline, Kirkland, and also Algonquin, I believe. But just in case, I will definitely send Jen that information and share back with your council as well, so.
Thank you so much.
Deputy Mary Lamb?
Sure, I'll make the motion. I motion to authorize, what is it, the, the mayor to sign the REPLUS pledge? I think there was more verbiage, but I'm not, I can't see it, so.
Second. Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Would you like to speak to that motion?
I'm finally glad we're signing on to this. The presentation, I think, was made a year ago, and I was pretty happy to see all the commitments that we can pledge, and hopefully we can achieve them. So thank you for being here.
Awesome. All right. All those in favor of us signing on, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Well, thank you, Audrey, and Jen, and Dorian. We really appreciate it. We will get that to you soon.
Thank you, council.
All right. So next is a closed session. Forgive me, do I need to say like the amount of time? Okay.
No, you do.
Okay, good. Phew. All right, closed session, collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to RCW 42.30.140.4B. Yeah, and we'll be back. And then do we adjourn when we just get back? Is that right?
No action is anticipated after this. And so the meeting will adjourn at the conclusion of the closed session.
All right. And then we'll do council and city manager reports when we get back.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Council report and city manager. So I'll start with our city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Just one quick item. Our agenda next week is quite full, and I had a request to poll council as to whether or not you would consider starting at 5:30, given that it is Thanksgiving week and folks might either be trying to travel or have guests coming in. So I'm going to put that out there and look to all of you. So I'm going to put that out there and look to all of you to give me a thumbs up or not to start early next week. Everyone? All right? Fantastic.
The girl Farrell is double-checking. Just hold on. I'm so busy. Apparently, I have nothing on that day.
All right. Fantastic. Appreciate that, council. So we will... We will... When we publish the agenda tomorrow, we will put that as a 5:30 start time, so thank you.
All right. Are there any other reports? Nothing? Alrighty. Oh, yep.
Councilmember Howe and I probably owe the council a document. We do have to complete the fire chief's eval by the end of the month, and so...
Yes.
What other jurisdictions are doing is pulling together one document per jurisdiction to get all of the feedback in there. So I think maybe we can chat tomorrow. We can pull something together and share it out and get feedback from all of you.
Because we did get some feedback that I had already forwarded, and so that's what I was actually confused about. Are we doing this again?
Yeah, that was just like, I think there wasn't a lot of participation from all the groups.
So we're doing it again.
And that was just supposed to be for the mid-year, and now we're actually trying to wrap it up for the end of the year, the official one.
Okay, got it. So, thank you.
Awesome.
So just look for that.
Yeah.
Please.
That sounds good. And then I'm sure there'll be a way that we can get you feedback, so it's not like too many people at once. Alrighty. Anything else? All right. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alrighty. Good night, everybody.